Welcome to the 5:30 PM, October 25th, City Council Presentations Meeting. Yeah, that is right, Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Not that there's a lot of speakers here yet, City Clerk, but would you please read the rules to speak?
This is a City Council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Councils will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions from the public present. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the Council Chamber.
Thank you very much, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are on Agenda Item 4A, which is a presentation from the Central Florida Treatment Center. The Titusville Clinic will provide a presentation to Council. Sir?
Come on up, guys. Just introduce yourself, and we know your presentation isn't from Titusville, so go ahead.
Absolutely. My name is Dave Neese. I'm the Regional Director for Central Florida Treatment Centers.
I'm Lisa Sweeney. I'm the Program Director for the Titusville Clinic.
So, go.
Well, yeah, go ahead, and as we talked a little earlier about what they can do, say whatever you want to say about the program, and then we'll turn it over to questions.
Okay. To give you a little bit of history, and please feel free to interrupt me. I didn't do a PowerPoint. I've done presentations for 20 years, and I used to create what I thought were brilliant and insightful presentations, and they tell you always leave 10 minutes left at the hour for questions and answers, and they had nothing to do with anything I presented. So I just wing it. I would much rather be interrupted by you. Ask questions, ask what you want to know. I'd rather talk half as much, and you get what you need to know, what you want to know. Central Florida Treatment Centers has been treating opioid dependents since 1983. Our first clinic opened in Orlando. We opened our first clinic in Brevard in 1985, and Cocoa. We now have eight clinics, all the way from Titusville, being the furthest north, all the way down to Fort Lauderdale, being our furthest south. So we cover a lot of territory. Again, I wish I could get put out of business because there was no need. You might have heard there's an opiate crisis going on. May have picked up on that.
Yes, yes, yes.
We've been doing methadone maintenance, medication-assisted treatments, the big thing now. We were doing opioid dependency treatment before there was medication-assisted treatment. It used to be called methadone maintenance treatment. We are able to use all three of the FDA-approved medications for that, but primarily, we treat methadone, what most, with methadone. We treat opioid dependence with methadone. We're adults only. We don't treat children or youth. There are different avenues or venues for children and youth. We've been, what most people don't understand is they think, oh, they go, they get medication, and they leave, and that's it. That's selling medication. We're not a pharmacy, although we have a pharmacy. We are a full-fledged outpatient substantive use treatment center. We have masters and licensed clinicians. We do counseling. We do individual, family, group counseling. We have treatment plans. We do drug screening. We're overseen by DCF. We're overseen by DEA. We're overseen by SAMSSAC. We're overseen by the Joint Commission on Accreditation. We are the most highly regulated form of addictions treatment that exists, and we've gotten very good at it. And when I first started, I started working for this company in 2000, so I've been doing this a little while. I came from abstinence-based treatment. I didn't know anything about methadone maintenance. I heard kind of what everybody else had heard. You know, it's what those people need to be on to go there and do that thing. And so when I moved down to Florida, I told the owner I would give her a year, find out what this is all about. Does it work? Is it a good quality treatment program? Well, that was almost 23 years ago, and like I said, we've opened eight clinics since. So the bottom line for medication-assisted treatment, whether it's Suboxone, Buprenorphine, Methadone, what it does is it replaces a biological-physiological dependency that does not permit the person to function. So if you are an opioid user, if you use short-acting opioids, it used to be we would just talk about Oxycontin, Oxycodone, heroin. Now we're talking about Fentanyl and nothing but Fentanyl. Basically, you live your life being high, normal, sick, high, normal, sick, high, normal, sick, every four to six hours a day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. What methadone or Buprenorphine, most people know it as Suboxone, that's a brand name, all it does is it takes away the high, and it takes away the sick. So at a therapeutic dose, you're not high, you're not sick, for 24 hours. No withdrawals. You're not high, you're just you. Then the work begins. That's when counseling can be effective. That's when we can begin working with people on this. I've been doing presentations for about 30 years on addictions. I used to have to fight with people about, is addiction a disease? People would go, it's not a disease, it's a choice. They made bad choices. Nobody argues that with me now. If I say, is addiction a disease, everybody goes, yes. Here's the problem. It's the only disease we jail people for. It's the only disease that a less-than-compliant patient is supposed to be thrown out of treatment. As an example, I always use, if I go to the doctor, and he says, Dave, I got bad news. You are a non-insulin-dependent diabetic. I'm going to start you on Metformin. By the way, you need to lose 40 pounds. Get your lazy butt off the couch. Stop drinking beer and eating Twinkies. Go on this diet. Do these things, and you'll get better. If I do nothing other than take the medication, and I go back in six months, I'm not a compliant patient, I've not followed the treatment plan, but I'm better because the medication's working. If that doctor said, I'm sorry, you haven't done what you're supposed to. We're throwing you out of treatment, he'd get sued. Yet, that's how we treat the disease, everybody agrees, of addiction. So it's a very, very different world that we're in now. Opioid overdose is the number-one leading cause of death in 24- to 45-year-old people in America. We lost over 100,000 people last year to opioid overdose. That's not drugs, opioid overdose. So it's severe, it's everywhere. When I started in the field in 2000, everybody coming into methadone maintenance was 40-something Ivy heroin addict. They'd been doing it 15, 20 years. They were done. They retired. They've had enough. It's very simple. You get them in, you get them stable, they feel better, they do what they need to do, they go on with their life. Then we had, who remembers Oxycontin? Yay. We had pharmaceuticals. So the age went down. We started admitting late twenties, early thirties. They may have been using two or three years. It was much harder to get them stable, took much higher doses because they're taking pharmaceutical-grade opioids. Then we shut down the pill mills, which was good. We had to. That was a bad thing. But those of us in the field said, you take away the pills, they're not just going to go, oh, well, guess I need to stop. No, they're going to use heroin. So you saw the pills go down, and the heroin go up, in an exactly opposing scale. What we didn't know was coming was Fentanyl. As heroin use was going up, and heroin was coming into the community, Fentanyl was coming into the community. Fentanyl is not being manufactured in labs. It's not high-quality. There's no quality control. Fentanyl is a crapshoot. You never know what you're getting, and I've supplied some books for y'all to look through. In terms of Fentanyl, the other piece was with heroin, you know, when I was a kid, people that were dabbling in drugs, they were drinking, they were doing pot, maybe some cocaine, but only the bad people shot heroin. That was very dangerous. Fentanyl is in everything. It's in the marijuana. It's in pills. Pills are being produced that look exactly like pharmaceutical-grade benzodiazepines, pharmaceutical-grade opioids. It's Fentanyl. There's no opioids in there. We have patients come in and go, oh, I only use heroin. We do their intake drug screen, we get the results back, we sit them down, say, I'm sorry, honey, there's no heroin in your Fentanyl. It's in everything. We've got patients that are just using pot. They're testing positive for Fentanyl. That's why it's killing so many people. So that's what we do. It is a long-term maintenance program. The vast majority of our patients get stable very quickly. There's a very protective factor to it. But again, not every patient's going to do everything they need to, just like not every diabetic is going to do everything they need to in the plan, but we still need to treat them. So that's kind of my soapbox spiel.
I do want to butt in.
Please.
I do want to bring to the forefront that opioid addiction isn't just the street thugs or what have you. It begins somewhere. Nobody wakes up and says, I want to be a drug addict. It begins with a car accident and pain. It begins with mental illness and anxiety and depression and things like that. It begins with somebody going through trauma, sexual abuse, physical abuse. Those are the bulk of the people that we treat. Those are the ones that were like you, Mayor, and then had an accident and became addicted to opiates, and now they're starting to do the street hustle and losing their jobs, and those are the people. It's everyday people. It's not street people. It's not thugs. It's your brother, your sister, your family member, your friend. Those are the people that we treat. Okay, I'm off my soapbox.
Well, just to toss out there real quick, as you said that, there's certainly some NFL quarterbacks, I'm going to get into names, but there's some NFL quarterbacks who, through injury, ended up taking some and suddenly got addicted. That's a shame. I learned a little bit about the Fentanyl. I mean, it sounds like whoever, the dealers, the people, whoever, they're putting it in everything, and that's something.
It's even on money.
Yeah. You can get it off of paper money. If you test all the currency, paper currency in our country, about 80% to 85% of it have traces of cocaine, Fentanyl, and opioids.
Goodness gracious. A couple of questions, and I think we kind of talked about it a little bit, but how are you funded?
That's a big answer. We are private pay. Patients can come in, say, I don't have insurance, or I do have insurance, and I don't want to use it, or whatever. How much does it cost? It's $18 a day. Covers everything. You can't go to McDonald's and Starbucks for $18 a day. If you are on five milligrams, it's $18 a day. If you're on 100 milligrams, it's $18 a day. If you see your counselor once a week, it's $18 a day. If you see a counselor 20 times a week, it's $18 a day. Again, I'm not saying it's inexpensive. $18 a day, $126 a week, that's a car payment in a month. It's a nice car, car payment. Well, not anymore. Was a nice car, car payment in a month, but it's a lot cheaper than what they were doing. In addition to that, we're also funded, we're fully Medicaid, although we're waiting on Titusville. All of our clinics are fully Medicaid, Medicare-certified. We've also managed to, it started here in Brevard County. We have, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Florida Cares, that is our managing entity. The federal government has just tossed out billions of dollars for treatment, and some of it's actually making it to the treatment centers. We have, we're a private-for-profit company, and it's unheard of for us to get grants. We're in our third year now of a grant with Central Florida Cares where we can treat indigent patients. We can treat up to 20 indigent patients in all four of our three Brevard, one Orange County clinics. So we've got a wide availability of funding available for us. Unfortunately, the problem is, we also have some commercial insurances, and we're getting more. The more you get, the crazier it gets, unfortunately. The drawback, kind of the running joke, is if we can get 50 more Medicaid patients, we can lay off a staff member. The reimbursement rate for Medicaid is extremely low, and a lot of the providers, I work with all the providers in the state. I'm the State of Florida representative to the National Board, to ATOD, and a lot of the providers in the state are getting to where we are going to have to stop accepting Medicaid patients. There's, we haven't had an increase in our Medicaid rate since 2003, so.
How many, well, let me clarify this. Do they have to be referred by physician, or they can walk in?
The vast majority of our patients hear about us from other patients.
And they walk in?
And they walk in. They walk in, we'll do a pre-screen. We'll find out, you know, are you appropriate? This is what's going on. This is what's involved. We tell them in depth, this is a big commitment. This is a serious commitment. You're going to be doing this for a long time, if not a lifetime. A lot of clinics will not tell patients that upfront. We will. If they're appropriate, we can put them on the next intake list, basically once we get everything put in place. So we do intake days, one to two days a week, depending on doctor availability. Doctors are very expensive. We have to have a physician. What's interesting is if you go to a Buprenorphine, Suboxone doctor, that doctor can call in by telehealth, do your initial assessment, write a prescription, send it to your pharmacy, and you can start induction. The feds and the state will not allow that for methadone. Same drug, same issue. They'll not allow that for methadone. It must be face-to-face. So during COVID, we were meeting with patients face-to-face. We closed for all of two days during COVID. So we were running all of our clinics seven days a week during COVID.
So they come and see you. You don't have an overnight facility?
No, we are all outpatient.
So you deal with them in the day, and then send them on their way? Do they come back on a daily basis?
Yes. The patients, when they come to us, they start out with, and again, a lot of it initially is tied to dosing. The dosing becomes less and less important. They come every day, seven days a week, 365 days a year initially. We basically see them every day. They're assessed by a nurse. They're seen by counselor. They're seen by staff. We assess them as we're going through induction. Induction is where you start. Nobody can have their first dose of methadone be more than 40 milligrams by federal law. The reason for that is if you come to me and go, oh, I've got this huge habit, and we go, okay, well, you need 100 milligrams. We could kill you. So we start low, and we titrate up. So we meet with them every day. We talk about symptoms. We assess. We look at what's going on. We may do what's called a clinical, oops, Clinical Opioid Withdrawal Scale, CAWS, to determine dosing, but the idea is to get them to a therapeutic dose. Beyond that, you will be coming every day for at least 30 days, so seven days a week for 30 days. When you've been doing well for 30 days, we have a drug screen that's free of illicit substances, and you've met nine other criteria, like employment, no illegal behavior, things like that, you earn one take-home, which means you're coming six days a week. It's an invasive process. The regulations just got changed this year coming out of COVID. The feds changed theirs, and thank God, Florida followed suit. At 90 days, they can get a second, so they don't come in on the weekends, but we see them five days a week. At 180 days, they can get a third, so the weekend and another weekday. Nine months of successful treatment and three consecutive months of illicit free drug screens, you can start coming in once a week. So it progresses from there. It used to take a year to earn four take-homes, and it'd take two years to earn five, three years to earn six. So now we can do that in nine months.
All right. And I'm going too long here, but a couple of short questions. How many do you get in the day? Yeah, about how many a day?
Well, it depends on the clinic. Her clinic, 33 at most.
Well, we're at 37.
Yes.
A day?
We've grown.
That's a lot.
No, that's not. For instance, the Cocoa Clinic at its peak had 400 patients, so we may see 250 patients a day. We open at 5:30 in the morning, and again, not all of those patients are there for everything. That doesn't mean we do 250 counseling sessions. Counseling sessions, it's a minimum of one 30-minute session a month. Again, we basically meet the patients where they're at, and we do what they need. So you may come in one day, check in, everything's good, go take your dose, everything's good, yep, right, and leave. It could be an eight-minute visit. You could come in one day, and you need to do a drug screen, and you need to meet with your counselor, and you need to do a treatment plan, so it could be an hour visit.
Well, let me just ask you, what percentage follow-through? I mean, because it sounds like there's a lot on them to do their part and come back, and do their part and come back, and quite honestly, you might be dealing with some folks that aren't real reliable.
Honestly, the vast majority of patients, I would say 85% of our patients, continue coming to us.
Very good. What percentage do you think are homeless?
We have a very small percentage of homeless, simply because it's very, very hard for them to acclimate. I would say we're probably in the 5% to 8%. Being homeless doesn't preclude you from coming to treatment with us, but we need to pay special attention, especially if you're getting to the point where you can earn take-home medication. You have to be able to secure that. Taking a dose of methadone to a homeless camp is not a good plan.
Good point.
So we have to look at all that. There's a huge list of criteria we go through. Not only is the person capable and appropriate in doing what they need to do, but is the environment they're taking it into also safe. So we try to be very aware of the community, and the community needs.
Not your first rodeo. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for being here, Member Nelson.
So for people who want to find you, where do they find your office?
We are just south of Parish Hospital. We're in Parish, just Parish Court.
1825 Just Parish Court.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And you all have a brochure that has all of our clinic numbers on it. Doesn't have the Stuart one. Sorry, I didn't make that up. We just got Stuart.
And we have, we also work with our patients to give them resources, housing, if they need HIV testing or treatment, things like that. We have resources for that. I'm working with Parish Medical, trying to develop a community or peer warm-up handoff?
A peer recovery, basically a certified peer recovery specialist. And again, this may be way more than you want to know. Parish Hospital is one of the few hospitals in Brevard County that is part of the Governor's Core Task Force. I don't know if you remember Governor Santas' announcement. Brevard's one of the counties that's part of CORE. I wheedled my way on that committee. So we are working with not only the hospitals and the providers and the outpatient treatment and Suboxone and 12-step and all of that, trying to coordinate all of that. What we're trying to create is if you OD and a paramedic takes you to a hospital, the hospital can do an oxone and bring you back. And right now, when they bring you back, if you're not willing to stay, they say, you know, good luck, you ought to get treatment. What we're trying to get to is the hospital, the emergency room department can start you on Suboxone, can start you on methadone right then and there, and then a peer, certified peer recovery specialist can get you to the doctor, the clinic, the whatever follow-up. Again, we don't care if it's us. We care that they get the help they need.
Very good.
And we're also on the internet, and they can actually fill out a pre-screen that I see comes straight to me, and I connect with them that way, too.
How many people can you take? You said you have 37?
How many you got? We can, the clinic we built will handle 800.
Oh, gosh.
A day?
Yes.
That's the same clinic I toured? Where are you going to stand them?
Again, they're not all there at the same time, and they're not all there for significant periods. But the clinic was built to handle 800. Do I think we're going to reach that in Titusville?
I kind of hope not.
If we're, if we're two or three years from now at 300, 350, that's a good, healthy clinic, and you don't want to get too big. There's some clinics up north in the Northeast that are, you know, 6,000 patients, and we have patients come down from clinics, and we're like, well, who is your counselor? Counselor? I've never seen a counselor. We do, we do treatment. We don't sell medication.
We still want to connect with the patients and help them progress along their path.
As the mayor saw, her office is right off the lobby.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All my directors' offices, they hate me for it, are right off the lobby.
Okay.
But you don't really know what time they're coming in, because they don't necessarily make appointments, do they?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have some that we know, if they have jobs, they're there first thing in the morning. They're there before we even open, waiting. And they're very good about being on time and getting through the line. We have a waiting area, both in the reception and a waiting area by the dosing windows. They are considerate to each other and make sure that if somebody is late for work, I've seen somebody else.
In a larger clinic, we have early hours that are only for employee people.
So is there an average length of time that people are in the program, or is it basically forever?
It, it depends on the person. Some people are able to reach stability and then start tapering off, but it's a very, very slow process, because you don't want them to go into withdrawals, relapse. So it's about one milligram a week, which is, if they're on 50, it'll take them a year to titrate down. However, there are also those that have the genetic makeup that will probably be on it the rest of their life, like a person who takes Metformin or somebody with a heart issue.
Pre-diabetes example I gave you. Some patients, they will change their diet, change their health, lower their medication. They get, where they, they don't need their medication. They're no longer pre-di, they go on about their business. That's not the vast majority of patients. The vast majority of patients progressed to insulin dependence, and then they're on insulin the rest of their life. It's, I mean, they're bad. It means combination of environment, ability, you know, genetics. There's a lot of stuff that goes into this. So in, in addictions, we go, oh, those, those poor souls, they've got to be on that. Well, we don't say about any other medication for any other clinic. Does he, I take medication on a regular basis?
Let me move to Member Stokoe, and then that will be it, unless Member Robinson wants to, yeah, you have to do that. Go ahead, son.
Thanks. I have a few questions. So how is this different? I hear you talking about, like, the length of the program, and some of them can be on for the rest of their lives. How is this different than, like, detox and going through rehab, where we do see patients that can, like, how do you know that you're not crossing the line of enabling them to be on a substance for the rest of their lives versus helping them to get off the medication?
Well, first thing is, remember, there's no intoxication. So the reward...
So they can never get high on this, no matter how much they take?
Methadone is not a drug.
What about the other ones, Suboxone?
No. Buprenorphine, Suboxone, and Methadone are not drugs people use for party drugs. They are drugs that are valuable on the street because they prevent withdrawal, they eliminate withdrawal symptoms. That's not a drug of, you know, woo-hoo, we're going to party, we're going to have a good time. The onset, for instance, if I'm shooting heroin or Fentanyl, the onset is like that. It's immediate. If I take a pill, the onset is 20 minutes. If I take a dose of methadone, the onset is four to six hours. So that's... So that's part of what makes it dangerous as well. It is a very long act, it has a 24 to 36-hour half-life, whereas all the other opioids, if you're prescribed an opioid for pain, how often are you supposed to take it? They're all the same. Every four to six hours. Every prescription's exactly the same. Methadone, you take once a day, because it has a long half-life. Suboxone, you take once a day, it has a long half-life. So it's not a drug, people, I'm not saying it's not diverted, not saying it's not abused, but it's not a drug people are using to get high on. So in terms of that, they've done studies, and again, this may be way more info than you want, but look up neuroplasticity, it's a fascinating field of research. They've done research on what happens to the brain with opioid use over time, and you look at the pleasure centers of the brain, you can basically do a CAT scan and see parts of the brain light up when there's stimulation. So you look at a normal brain, certain centers are lit up. You look at the opioid addictive brain, not when they're high, just the brain, it's black, it's not lit up at all. What they have found is even people with six, eight, 10, 20 years clean from opioid abuse, the pleasure centers still don't work right. So there's a lot of people that end up getting into parachuting, roller coasters, car racing, because the stuff that makes us panicked is the stuff that makes them feel at all.
Very fascinating, but we're like, double our 15 minutes.
Yeah, if they can just be quicker answers, then how do you guys make sure that they're not going and selling their medic, the pills that they're getting at the methadone clinic?
They don't get pills.
Or what, what is it? If it's not pills?
It is an oral liquid, and it is a dispersible disget. So it's put in liquid.
Okay.
So when they are given their dose, we watch them take it. When they're given take-home medication, there's some diversion protocols in place. Am I naive enough to say that some of it doesn't make it on the street? No, I'm not stupid, neither are you. But the vast majority of them don't, because they know if they don't take their medication, they're going to have withdrawal symptoms.
Plus, there's the fact that they have to bring back their bottles, and if they don't get, bring back their bottles, then they don't get their take homes, and that's a very big detriment.
And then, my last question, what is their incentive for coming? Like, why do they choose to come?
Most of our patients that are doing well, they, they come in and they say, thank you, you saved my life, to which we say, no, we didn't. You did it. The medication, the counseling, the connectivity, the supportiveness, is basically the stability in their life that they've never had. As Lisa said a little while ago, some of these people have lived, there's times when you know the backstory, you're like, why aren't you using more drugs? Some of these people's backstories are horrific. So they have found a place where they're respected, they're cared for, they're treated well, and they're treated humanely, and most of our patients say it works. It keeps them stable, it gives them the quality of life.
And they, they tell you, I just, I want a normal life, I don't want this, I want what everybody else has.
Very good. Member Stokoe, you good?
I'm good, yep.
Member Robinson, you will conclude.
Just one, what is the correlation between you and the alcohol non, and do you recommend your patients to get in some type of program?
Absolutely. We, we don't care where they get support, we care that they get support. So some 12-step groups are very anti-medication, including psychiatric medication. We tend to not refer to those groups, we tend to know which ones are or aren't. 12-steps are great, we encourage people to go to 12-steps, we encourage people to reengage in their church, reengage in their faith, we encourage people wherever they're going to find support. We are open to all forms of support.
And last question, confidentiality?
Hmm?
Confidentiality?
Oh, we are under part federal confidentiality regulation, CFR 42, Part II. We abide by that. If you call the clinic, let's say your wife is there, and you call the clinic and say, my wife is there, I need to know X, Y, and Z. If we don't have consent for release information, we don't, we can't acknowledge that she exists.
Right, thank you.
Well, again, I thank you guys for doing what you do. When I was there, I sent that, and I'm thinking about the numbers you may be able to take in, and it's like, wow. So I won't, because I'd be confidential. But anyway, I appreciate what you do, and it's amazing. I mean, truly, and I know we went over, but this could have been a two or three-hour seminar.
Oh, this could be a six-hour seminar.
So clearly, you didn't need, you didn't need a PowerPoint.
No.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you guys.
Mr. Jordan, my wife Amy says hello, so.
All right, City Manager.
Onto 4B, which is the Sustainability Action Plan Phase 2 update. A presentation on the draft of the Sustainability Action Plan will be provided by Rachel Mueller, no actions required, and Rachel, all yours.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Good evening, Council. I hope I am half as entertaining as the first presentation. That was really informative. So I'm here to provide you an update on the Sustainability Action Plan. We are in the process of do Phase 2 of the Sustainability Plan, and in my presentation, I will go over a quick summary of Phase 1, some current initiatives that the city is working on to promote sustainability, the focus areas and the action items within them, and then what our next steps are going to be. So to start to briefly recap what's been done already, the Phase 1 was a public engagement component of the Sustainability Action Plan, and that included both online and in-person engagement. It ran from October 2021 to January 2022, and the primary focus of the public engagement was to understand the community's priorities and concerns regarding sustainability. And we did that through various methods, including an online survey, which we got 100 responses, a public workshop, attending a community event, and hosting a stakeholder meeting. And so all of the information throughout the public input process was turned into the focus areas of the Sustainability Plan to guide the objectives, goals, and actions that are forthcoming. So to start the Sustainability Plan, we wanted to look at what the city is already doing to promote sustainability within the community. There are many more actions than what I've highlighted. I've chosen to highlight the most recent achievements. In 2018, the Community Development Department did a Sustainability Initiatives Inventory, and so anything prior to that, I would refer you to look at that document. So these are highlights of between 2019 to 2022. And I'll go more into depth on the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, but just to briefly mention the rest of them, there's, we just started recently, within the last year, a brownfields assessment program with grant funding from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and this is within our Economic Development Department, and it's a really great resource to promote sustainable economic development and encourage businesses that are looking at locating an area that might have contaminated soil to take advantage of this grant funding. So there are many multiple benefits to having this program. And then the Low Impact Development, which is coming up to about a year of being passed by, by you all, and that has been really successful in incentivizing developers to use Low Impact Development in their, in their sites, as well as the city has been incorporating Low Impact Development in city projects as well. So that's highlighted in the plan. And then we have the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, which really targets the equity component of sustainability, and the two can work together to promote common goals. So that's why it's being included in here. Also, in 2019, the city went through a certification process to be a Florida Green Local Government, and this was a really great way for all the different departments to get together and learn about what each of them are doing to be more green and where we can continue to make progress. And then the last big one is the Traffic Calming Program by the Public Works Department, which at first glance, you might think, what, what does that have to do with sustainability? That's infrastructure and engineering, but it's really about equity. Most of our fatalities and serious injuries happen to our most vulnerable road users. So when we are engineering and designing our road to promote safer speeds, we are encouraging people to walk, we are encouraging people to bike, we are making it safer for people with disabilities, and that is all components of sustainability, and you're going to see more of that within new actions in the Smart Growth Focus Area. And so with that, and then we do continuous education and outreach in all the different departments. Our Water Resources Department has a water conservation program. Our Fire Department provides free bicycle helmets to children 16 and younger. We are doing a resiliency education in the Community Development Department, and our Public Works Department is doing a new educational video series on YouTube, which is really great and highlights some of the Low Impact Development that we're doing throughout the city. So those are continuous efforts, and they really summarize what the city has been doing in the last three years for sustainability. But the first one that I had on there, the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory, this one is brand new, it's being highlighted for the first time in the Sustainability Action Plan, and greenhouse gases are, gases within our atmosphere that are naturally existing, and they help regulate the Earth's temperature. But due to man-made advancements, innovations, infrastructure, all of that stuff, we've been adding more of these gases into our atmosphere that has been retaining the heat from the sun onto the planet, and we've been seeing the repercussions of that, you know, within the last decade or so, and it's projected to continue to amplify. So we have to make, if we want to be a sustainable society, we have to make efforts to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. But how can you reduce your emissions if you don't know what they are? So we did a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which piggybacked off of a 29 inventory that was done through the support of Ichley-Stetson University and the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, where they helped the city to conduct a city operations greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and this is now being supplemented with a community-wide emissions inventory with the support of the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So a lot of it is the same data, it's just the larger context, and since this was work that we had to go back and look at the 2019 numbers, it's, there, there's going to be room for improvement whenever we continue to do more emissions inventories, because a lot of this is going to be derivatives of numbers from Brevard County as a whole, scaled to our population. So as we continue to do greenhouse gas emissions inventories, they're going to show a lot clearer of a picture, but right now, this is a really great starting point to understand where we are in the emissions that Titusville is producing. And as you can see, city operations are roughly about 2% of the community-wide emissions, which is pretty typical for city operations, and all of public utilities are just 4%. So most of our emissions are actually coming from transportation. That's roughly a third of our emissions are simply through vehicles' miles traveled, which is an index to measure how much carbon emissions or just greenhouse gas emissions are coming from our, the tailpipe every time we get into the car and we drive to another location. The second largest is going to be in residential, and then solid waste and commercial. So we really want to target our strategies to the low-hanging fruit within transportation, residential, and solid waste to make the largest impact initially. So those are our current initiatives, and now we get into the meat of the Sustainability Action Plan. Like I previously mentioned, it's broken down into six focus areas that were derived through the community engagement process, community and livability, ecosystems, and resiliency, infrastructure and energy, water, smart growth, and sustainable economy. These are vast and broad focus areas that really cover almost all of our everyday lives, as much as we possibly could. And so to get into that, I have one note that I didn't memorize, sorry. There are over 80 action items to achieve 28 objectives and seven goals within these six focus areas. So I don't have the time to tell you all of those action items, but it is provided in the report that I hope you've had the time to go over. So right now, I'm just going to give you a highlight of the objectives, and, you know, I want to save time for questions, so it's going to be rapid fire, I think, I hope. So community and livability, the goal of community and livability is to improve our sense of community and quality of life through the services and programs that we provide that promote inclusivity, equity, and empowerment. The broad picture here, this is a focus area that's really looking at equity within the city and what we can do to improve inclusivity and equity. That also includes, oh, did I, I'm so sorry, I forgot to continue to flip, okay. So the first objective is to increase citizen participation and engagement. So here, we're trying to do public engagement, reach broad audiences, and engage members of the community that are often left out of the planning process. The second objective is to expand access to healthy foods and active lifestyles. This really addresses food deserts and incentivizes local agriculture while simultaneously making sure that the city is accessible for all age groups and people of all abilities to be active and to be part of the community. The third objective of community and livability is to promote the idea of complete neighborhoods. Again, this is really addressing having active lifestyles and improving the quality of life of all residents. And if we go back to the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, the largest source of our emissions is transportation. So in a complete neighborhood, you should be able to walk or bike to wherever you need to go, and that way, we will be reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by promoting complete neighborhoods. And then the last objective of community and livability is to demonstrate progress towards reducing poverty and homelessness. And the goal here is not perfection, it's just progress. You know, it's, it's a wicked problem that can't be solved overnight, but it's within our duty as city government to continue to strive to make progress towards these goals, and it's important to include it in sustainability. So the next focus area is ecosystems and resiliency, and the goal here is to protect our natural resources and ecosystems and develop an ecologically resilient community. So this program is, or this focus area is primarily regarding our environmental stewardship, but like in all the focus areas, there might be one major of player, but they're going to have co-benefits with social equity and economic development as well. So the first objective is to increase the natural resources acreage and habitat area for threatened species and wildlife. We have some really great action items within this objective, including the development of an urban forestry management plan. The second objective is to prioritize the use of green infrastructure, low-impact development, and nature-based solutions. This one, we're really working off of the recent ordinance that was passed last year that prioritizes low-impact development, and how can we continue to expand those programs? And then the third objective is to continue to make demonstrable progress towards resilient Titusville's goals and objectives. You may remember in 2019, the city developed the Resilient Titusville Plan. We don't need to rewrite what's already been written, but it's fairly important that we mention these other planning documents that the city has already adopted and continue to intertwine them together to make them even stronger and, and to continue to work towards those goals as well. And so the fourth objective is to foster ecosystem and resiliency education and empowerment. Education is at the foundation of everything we should be doing with sustainability, because primarily what sustainability is, it's a culture shift. It's changing our mindsets, it's changing how we think about things, and you can't do that unless you're prioritizing education and then empowering the community to make the right decisions. So from there, we're going to go on to the third focus area, which is by and far our largest, infrastructure and energy. Within infrastructure and energy, we have two goals. The first one is to reduce energy consumption and transition to clean energy. It's pretty straightforward, it goes back to the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that was done. We want to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, reduce energy consumption, and make progress towards obtaining electricity from renewable energy sources. So within that, we have policies for the city to have a green fleet, to study pathways to net zero carbon emissions by 2050, not saying that we are committing to, to net zero by 2050, but studying pathways on if and how we can get there. I don't want us to be making commitments that we don't know if we can follow through, but it's really important that we look at where other cities are, where the state is, and where our country is as a whole, and right now, it seems to be a common consensus that... that we should try to be reaching net-zero by 2050. The second objective, reduce energy consumption. You know, new technology and better practices can reduce our energy demand and they can make us more resilient and capable of serving the population when we face major natural disasters and events, like in a hurricane. If we are less reliant, overly reliant on electricity, then, you know, we're more resilient and we are more sustainable. And then the third objective here is to, the making progress towards obtaining electricity from renewable energy. We've kind of already started to do this. At the Welcome Center, we have a demonstration, solar rooftop panel. But with this objective and with the actions in this, we want to move from demonstration projects to a larger, more inclusive program that we can start looking at, how are we going to fund it? What are the cost-benefit analysis going to be? And what exactly we need to do to get there? So we're going to move on to Goal Four, which is to continue to improve and adopt innovative infrastructure to improve quality of life. So this is the more infrastructure side of this focus area. And the first objective here is to achieve a 75% diversion rate from recycling, composting, reducing consumption, and reusing material. This is going to be the most specific action or objective you see in the Sustainability Action Plan. And the reason for that is that in 2008, the Florida Legislature enacted a goal to reach a 75% recycling rate by 2020. I can guess you can all imagine where that went. But right now, we have not met that goal as a state. We're at a 49% recycling rate. But just because we didn't achieve a goal doesn't mean it's not a good goal. You know, we, not, all goals are meant to be achieved immediately. Sometimes we have to continue to work on them even after that deadline date. So that's what we're doing here. We're going to continue to work on reducing our consumption, increasing our recycling, reuse. And for the city, our diversion rate is actually currently 25% and the county is 52%. So we have a lot of progress to make in this objective. The second objective is to reduce citywide vehicle miles traveled through multimodal transportation planning. I've kind of really harped on this one a lot already, considering that it's our largest emissions factor. So there are some action items within here to research micro-mobility options, implement our existing mobility plan, adopt a complete streets program, and continue to partner with other agencies to make sure that we are providing everyone with more options than just automatically having to get into their own personal vehicle. And then the third one is to develop a smart cities initiative to boost urban innovation. And sustainability is more than just being reactive to what's already happened. It's about having forethought and thinking about the future and what our future needs are going to be. And a lot of times, that is framed through the lens of urban innovation. And there's this fancy term being used nowadays called smart cities, which no one really knows what it means, but everyone likes to use it. So these are things like electric vehicles, the smart transportation systems, where when you, when you are in your vehicle and you go up to a red light, but there's no one else around and you're sitting there for two minutes waiting for the red light to change. Instead, that there are sensors on the roads so that the light senses that you're there and changes automatically. These things affect sustainability, because actually when we're driving and we're just idling, we're emitting more carbon emissions than when we're actually moving. So by idling, we, that's where we emit most of our carbon emissions in our vehicles. So by implementing these kind of small initiatives, we make really big impact, but they are considered urban innovations. And, you know, might seem a little far-fetched, but, you know, the technology is already here to start doing some of these things. So we're going to move on to the water. And this one is going to be primarily continuous effort. When we were doing the, the community engagement portion, water was something that was constantly mentioned throughout the process. People were very concerned about the city's drinking water. And so it would, felt like a disservice to ignore those concerns. So a lot of the efforts, the objectives, the goal, and the action items here are to continue the programs that we already have that are existing to promote clean drinking water and to continue to educate the community about the drinking water within Titusville, reassuring them about the supply of our drinking water and reassuring them about the quality of our drinking water. So when you go through the plan, in this section specifically, you're going to see the word "continue" a lot, because a lot of things that are mentioned on here are things we're already doing. We just want to reinforce to our community that this is something we take seriously and that we're not dismissing their concerns. So the objectives here are to reduce our per capita daily water consumption, reduce water consumption of city operations, maintain clean and reliable source of drinking water, ensure adequate water supply as the city continues to grow, and continue our education programs for water conservation. I, I'm not going to expound too much on this one, because water is always such a continuous topic and most of it, like I said, is just continuing actions we're already doing. But we'll move on to the next one, smart growth. So smart growth. So this one has kind of equal benefits between, I realize that I didn't change the goal. Sorry about that. This one is like, has equal benefits between environmental stewardship, economic development, and social equity. This one really brings them all together in a way that, that it's hard to say which one is coming first, the environment, economic development, social equity. This is where they are kind of all really combined. So the objectives here are to increase the number of buildings using sustainable practices. Some of our action items within this one are having all new city facilities be designated lead or an equivalent designation, which is also within our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan has that goal as well. The second objective is to increase the number of residents living within complete neighborhoods. This goes back to the first focus area where we talked about community and livability. But this one really focuses more on our city codes and making sure that it aligns with the goals of the city and the sustainability plan. The third objective is to promote policies and programs that will reduce household spending on housing and transportation combined. It's a common statistic to say that we should be spending no more than 45% of our household income on housing and transportation, which is getting even harder and harder to achieve with inflation, increased housing demand, low supply. So this is something that is, should be really top priority so that we can continue to keep Titusville affordable and have complete neighborhoods. The fourth objective is to increase housing units at all price points. This pretty much hits on the same aspect. Instead of, you know, focusing primarily on just building luxury housing or just affordable housing, you know, making sure that we're hitting all price points, because we have to meet the needs of all of the residents. And oftentimes, there's this concept called missing-middle housing, where maybe first-time homeowners can't afford what's on the market. It's either, you know, it's too expensive for them or it's designated an affordable housing project. And then, so within that, we want to make sure that everyone gets represented when we are increasing the housing units. So, yeah. Objective 6.5 is to increase access to pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. You know, this goes back to our complete neighborhoods and reducing our vehicle miles traveled. And, and within this objective, we have action items like to adopt a Vision Zero Action Plan, which you all might remember, I came here a few months ago with the resolution to adopt a Vision Zero. And then this also ties back in to some of our current initiatives with the traffic calming program. So even if you might think, oh, that's not sustainability, a lot of it does tie in and it's more of a cultural shift. Are we promoting programs and policies within the city that are going to promote the long-term sustainability of the future residents, of current residents, and the future residents that are going to live here? So making sure we're making these, these good choices now. So with that, we'll go, oh, yes, I forgot, the last one, oh my goodness. Sustainable economy, how can I forget? So the goal here is to promote a diverse and resilient local economy and workforce. So the objectives here are to demonstrate city leadership and sustainability. We want to make sure that we're not just telling the community that they should be, they should become more sustainable, that, you know, they should be using reusable water bottles, but, you know, we're not going to do that at the city level. You guys should put solar panels on your roofs, but City Hall is not doing that. So we want to make sure that the city is being a leader in sustainability efforts. So that's what this objective is all about. And then the second one is to advance equitable employment, to make sure we're providing resources to those that need it most and small businesses that need it most. And then support a local circular economy. Make sure that, or try our best possible, that's what we're trying to do, to produce and consume within the city, to kind of remove that footprint of how far things are traveling to get here and making sure that we have a culture of reusing instead of just single-use, one-time-use-only. So promoting a more circular economy. And then the last objective is to promote green businesses and eco-tourism. You know, Titusville is, we are at this very beautiful location with the Indian River Lagoon, the St. John's River. You know, we really want to make sure that we are tapping into those assets and working with nature instead of against it and really tapping into green businesses and eco-tourism that would really be successful, considering our amazing location. Okay, and now we can go into the next steps. So we have already completed Phase One, the focus area study, and we are now in the process of Phase Two, which I've presented the draft and my, I tried to be as quick as possible, presentation on the, on the Phase Two composition and adoption stage. And this is where, you know, now I'm trying to grab, grab feedback from what's been done. Last week, we had sent out a newsletter to our community development, our community development newsletter, which has about 650 people on it. We had an open rate of like 45%, so a bit under 300 people. There was opportunity to provide comments back. I did receive one comment, not to toot my own horn, but they said it was great. But that, that was the only feedback I got, so I might as well say it. And so then, once I, once I get the feedback from you all tonight and, you know, moving forward, I hope to come back to you all with, with this for adoption on your regular meeting agenda. And then from there, we can move on to implementation, which that's going to be the real meat of all of this. It's going to be the timeline, how long is it going to take us to do it? What, how much is it going to cost? Which departments are going to be responsible? Who do we need to partner with to get this done? So that's implementation, which we're hoping, we're shooting to get for by winter 2023, which is just January. Okay, that is all I have. I realize I took the whole time, but thank you very much.
Well, two things from here. First of all, thank you for the, the depth of presentation. You clearly were prepared. But not just that, how you have enveloped yourself with this entire program and from the beginning, from day one. So I thank you for that very much. And the second thing I would say is, Council, certainly I'm not going to try to edit what you go into, but let's not get, this could be a two-hour question and answer. So let's go ahead with Member Nelson.
Okay. There was an article on a place that's like 30 miles out of Fort Myers. And it was built to be sustainable, a community, it was Babcock.
Babcock Ranch.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, you saw that?
Yeah, I saw the article, whereas the rest of the county without electricity, that was the only area that had it, and it's 100% on solar power energy.
Yeah. So I think that's really great. It's a great presentation. I have to do this to you guys, sorry. Go EV.
Member Robinson.
Yes, I just, you know, being, having been in leadership roles for many, many, many years, I just love your enthusiasm about your work. Every, this is about the third time I've heard you present. And I think the mayor alluded to that as well. I just love your enthusiasm and that, if I could, I hope that as a pastor of a church, that I'm that enthusiastic about my message as of any.
You've clearly taken ownership. Member Stokoe.
Yes, I agree. I always love your presentations. It's very apparent that you are very knowledgeable and passionate, which I appreciate and value. My question, I don't have no issues with this. My question is, have you seen any issues that potentially the state could focus on that would help what we could do at the local level?
That's a great question. And to try to answer that as brief as possible, a lot of the time, some of these initiatives that are on here, and something I forgot to mention was that I tried to get as much departmental feedback on this as possible to make sure that all the different departments knew what was being presented to you all tonight. And the comment I got back most was, we don't have funding for that. And I was like, well, yeah, we don't have funding. It's the first time it's being presented. But a lot of it is also, there's so much grant funding out there. And when you're writing grants, you want to be able to go back to different planning documents or resolutions that you have already passed and say, you know, we wrote it down here as this is a priority for us, but we don't have funding for it. So that's why we're applying for this grant. So there is so much grant funding out there. There's the Department of Economic Opportunity provides grants. Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which we just got a grant to do the tree canopy assessment. They provide other grants as well. But a lot of the language is used to try to get state funding, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
All right, I'm going to keep it short. It was a great presentation for sure. But the challenge I have is the fact that it does take a lot of money to do this. What happened down south, I saw the same thing. I said, boy, that's where I wanted to be if, if there was a big storm, for sure. But that was a brand-new place, a brand-new development. There was money there. A lot of the things that I see in here would require specifically, when I look at bringing like healthy foods, healthy stores into an undeveloped area, the reason why you don't have that is because of money, right? And to get a businessperson like myself to say, I want to go in that area, I'm not going to go in there to fail, I want to go in there to succeed. So that's one of the challenges that I saw. When we talked about the affordable housing, I still don't have a definition of what that is, because I think back in 1983, when I bought my first house, it was $47,000. I was making $15 an hour. And it was very expensive to me. There are people who are just making $15 an hour now. So how in the world, what, what do you call an affordable house now? $47,000 today may be that affordable house price when you're making $15 an hour. I don't know. So I think that definitely needs to be defined. But I, I'm encouraged by this whole concept. You got to start with something, for sure, and you're, and you're doing that. I just applaud you for having the enthusiasm, because it's going to take continuous enthusiasm to get this, because there's going to be a lot of pushback. I know it will. Just because this, this is so complex, if you will. You've got so many different areas, so many different goals and objectives for each one of the areas, that I don't want you to get discouraged. I think any win that you can get out of any of these things, to me, is going to be a win for our environment, a win for, for the city. So keep on keeping on, is what I ask you to do, for sure.
Thank you, and challenge accepted.
I know it is, for sure. Thank you.
In just about everything I've ever done, the first thing you have to do is have a vision. And I think what you have done is put together some great visions. And with the visions come the goals, and then the goals come the steps towards the goals. And I see you doing all those things, you and your, your team, doing all those things. And it's very exciting to see. So with that, again, I want to thank you for your presentation and you, again, how you have dove right in and you're in the middle of it. Appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you guys all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well done. Petitions or requests? Think I've already got it. Three times. All right, let's go. Start her up.
Stan Johnston. Rachel did a fine job, oops, is that, yeah. Did a fine job on sustainability. But I want to mention some things that I've, I've opposed about this plan. And that has to do with the 2019 plan. And that has to do with the 2019 plan called Resilient Titusville. And I did it, how do you call it, vigorously opposed it, and I vigorously put input into the Resilient Titusville Plan. And so happens that Brad Parrish and Eddie Galindo didn't put it in. I want you to know is I went to all the meetings, and that Resilient Titusville Plan was a spoof in some ways because we spent much time on sea-level rights. Spent a lot of time on sea-level rights, hours, and I spent hours and hours and hours on sea-level rights after the meetings and so forth. Then what happened? It was all taken out. It was all taken out of the resilient plan because it was a political, explained to us political, that the state didn't want us to put it in there. That's pretty bad. In other words, it's a false report as politically motivated, it's falsely reported. So the second thing, I opposed it as a false report because of this. You've seen this many times. I want Mr. Brad Parrish to look at this, and also for Rachel to look at this. What this is, is we got, this is a picture looking, as you all know, looking westward from I-95. We have numerous restricted floodways that is in violation of our Stormwater Master Plan. And the city does what? Ignores it. The sustainability plan ignores it, ignores it. And that's not right because you're violating the Stormwater Master Plan. You cannot do calculations on this. How much water goes through these floodways? There's no way to run calculations for it. Comes and goes. There is no calculation because the city of Titusville is violating the law, violating sustainability. You can't have it. I've opposed this repeatedly, and I continue to oppose it. Now, another thing you're doing is what? Indian River pollution, Indian River pollution. I give you this because on October 11th, our city manager said, hey, this didn't happen. This what I reported, this thousand gallons of sewage running down Sherry Street, photographed and so forth, reported to police, he said it didn't happen. Sustainability should stop the false reports of sewage. Sewage spills are false reports. I want more time. I want more time on this.
Time's up, and I see no request for more time?
Doesn't surprise me at all.
Thank you, sir.
You should stop, you should stop the dishonesty.
I see none. Do we want to do four minutes or nine minutes before we start? All right, we'll start the next meeting at six fifty. I called for that. Well, I said, anybody want to pitch in? Come on up, come on up. Yep, that's exactly what we're doing.
Douglas Kniff. I live at 33, Lot 33 in Dixie Estates. Yeah, behind the airport. Congratulations for being elected the new mayor. It's been 14 months, I think, since I talked to you last.
I was waiting to something.
No, if you remember it or not, but you invited me back to bring this number-one lifetime Florence State recommended seawall. And with that, I got a little something to read you real quick. Welcome to a better way, to deserted land left of shoreline. The following mark left by a beaten path taken from the repeated passing away. I propose that I will install the instrument repeating passing away needed from the sketch recorded of the recording spot that moves across the face of the mark left behind. I will square off of this instrument mentioned above and extend outward 50 feet a level string line on the end of each 50-foot line. On the outward ends of two string lines mentioned above is another 50-foot line added to complete a perfect 50-by-50-foot square. Underneath, another perfect square described above will be added underneath on existing high-water flood stain mark this time. Measurement will be taken off for evidence from the latest or earliest plane of Mark's vestige. Signed evidence from the proceeding following the path from the past to the present. The power of the captivity for retaining the memory remembered with recorded evidence in the body of the shoreline minimal damage normally excreted. The spot I selected were created by meters, mets, and bounds which all requirements of code are entitled to revisions of Titusville City Ordinance to legally construct and build from scratch. The developed mechanism for the ongoing dialogue and collaboration between two or more people for the action to produce and create what has been mentioned above sincerely yours, Douglas Kniff, during the time and date. What this does is, my...
Check your time.
I left the other thing, I went down to the spot there next to the FWC station on the causeway and a parcel beside it, and just scooped up some red mangroves, little mangroves. And with that, there's a snail, lots of snails laying down there. I took eight pictures that I can email you. And we can get started if you'll put this on your agenda, and you can take a look at those pictures on the screen. But I would like to have a field trip with you, Mayor, down there to that spot, holding the other end of that 50-foot line, to draw a bill of lading. I'll draw the lading. It's an aerial view.
Hold up here, because time is up. I'll get with you on that. We'll talk. Okay, time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other petitions or requests? All right, we're still going to go for the 6:50 hour. We'll do the next meeting at 6:50.